You guys ready?
Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm. I don't have a... It's 6:30. I hereby call this workshop to order. First order of business is economic development incentives. We'll be discussing economic development incentives because creating a policy will mean we don't have to address incentives on a case-by-case basis going forward. We can streamline our process. Peachtree City needs to develop a policy with enough specificity that the Fayette County Development Authority and our city manager can be in a position to negotiate incentives to a certain council-determined limit. Additionally, the incentives can be applied universally to newer expanding businesses in Peachtree City. They are not necessarily specific to one company or one industry. And with that, is there anything you'd like to tell us in addition, Bob, to pull this up?
No, Mayor. I'd just like to thank Nikki for being here this evening from the Development Authority. And if you have any questions during this process, I'll be here to answer anything you have.
How about, Nikki, would you mind taking the podium? Because I anticipate a few questions. It's my pleasure to bring up Nikki Vander Slay. She is president and CEO of the Fayette County Development Authority. Do you want to boot this up at all?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me this evening. We appreciate your long partnership with the Development Authority. We... Sorry. We appreciate your long support of the Development Authority and all of our work. As you know, we have had some recent successes, and there's more to come. I was just sitting here writing some notes, and we have currently, there are four expansion companies, existing industries within Peachtree City that are going through expansion. So, we're looking forward to that. Part of our strategy is that we are hiring a staff person for business retention and expansion so that we can grow the businesses that we have here. We don't need to necessarily go recruit somebody new to come in. Those are wonderful. We love to have those. But if we can work with the companies that we have to grow them here, they're established, they're a known entity, and so we're working on that. Do you have a question?
All right. No.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do you have a presentation you're making?
I don't have a presentation that I'm making. I'm here to answer your questions.
I wasn't sure.
Sorry.
So, what we have in our council packet is what will kick us off. As a conversation starter, Peachtree City incentive options for council discussion include, first of all, an expedited permitting review process. It seems that many of the existing industries who are expanding, or many of the new industries coming in, are interested in streamlining the process to save time. Time is money. So, is there anybody who would object to including that as one of the incentives that the city manager and the Fayette County Development Authority could include in their negotiations?
I mean, I'm certainly all for it, but as we talked this afternoon in our two-by-twos is, we've got to figure out that, on all the incentives, what is the magic number? What is the going rate? And how do we go about doing that? I had said when we met the city manager and staff today, Mayor Leonard and I, that, you know, I don't want to just throw arrows. I want to be able to justify whatever decision with some data, whatever decision we make.
So, there's a couple of things that I'll tell you that we're seeing. And each project is different. So, it comes with a different needs, if you will. Some of it is, time is the most important thing, that as quickly as they can get into building a facility, growing their existing facility, any of those things. So, the permitting side of things, if you can mitigate the time in the permitting process and doing it expedited, that's very helpful. Some of them is their bottom line, and they say, okay, here's what we want, here's what someone else is offering us to go somewhere else. I feel very confident in saying that the Development Authority doesn't offer incentives unless it's needed in order to attract a really good business here. We have a strong track record of return on investment. The last two existing industry expansions that we did incentives for have over 500% ROI on it. And so, you know, it's not, we're not just giving away things. We're stewards of the taxpayers' money as well. And so, we're asking you to partner with us on what is it that you can bring to the table? How can we help you? How can we make those decisions very quickly? Bob and I and my board, and then coming back to you as a council to ratify anything, so...
The operative being, that end part, that she said, it all comes back to us.
It all comes back to you. But having, this is what we're comfortable with, this is what we could do, gives us some idea versus just saying, well, we'll have to wait and go see what they've got this month. And it also gives you some parameters with which you're comfortable with, this is what you'll say. I will tell you, the last time that we did, that we talked about incentives really, was all of the municipalities in the county agreed on the tax abatement structure and what that would look like. And we have a commitment in writing that if it deviates from that plan, then we will come back and have a conversation with you before we do anything. So, I say that to say that you get the final say on what it is. It just gives us a menu to choose from on what's relevant to the company.
So, a few years back, we, well, quite a few years back, we had something for jobs grant, and I forgot what that amount was. And then, in this packet, I don't know, we're just starting the conversation about, it was like a $60,000 a year job. And I thought to myself, I did some reverse math, and I thought, well, that'll buy somebody a $166,000 home, which there's one of them for sale. It's at Tinsley Mill, and it's in the flood plain. So, well, I think what we ought to do is look at a jobs grant that attracts the higher-paying jobs and certainly incentivize these companies to come here. But again, make it where it's for the higher-paying jobs. However, we can do that.
Well, let me offer this, that we're in a unique position as a community, that somewhere between 74% and 85% of our citizens travel outside of the county every day to work. Okay? And we import that many more coming in. And so, it's this balance of to get the jobs that are in Fayette County across the board, not any specific, but aren't going to maintain our median lifestyle. Because you think about, we go to the airport, we go to Chick-fil-A, we go to Midtown, we go to... They all go somewhere else and come back here. And it's, we, I love living in Fayette County, having lived in Peachtree City. It's a wonderful community. But my office was in Midtown at the time. And so, the wages that it would require, our workforce is not going to stay here for those, our citizens are not going to stay here for those jobs. They're going to get on their airplane and fly somewhere else. And so, we're in a unique situation. I will tell you that that $60,000, it used to be 40. It's inched up to 50, and this jobs grant is at 60. So, we're moving the needle up some. But when you think about our largest employers and their capital investment, which offsets residential property taxes, okay? The jobs don't offset it, but the capital investment does. When you take that into consideration, we've got a lot of investment on 74, on dividend from those companies. And so, they're not paying the same wages, but this is an incentive to inch them up a little bit at a time.
So, something that we have to relate to the citizens and to ourselves is the trade-off of, okay, we provide, and there's some higher-paying jobs, but the average jobs that are not paying enough to live here, that we have to deal with the additional traffic to offset some of the tax savings. And I mean, that's something we have to think about and relate to citizens.
Amen to that. Well, there was, there's also the fact that if, back a few years ago, we did this with these jobs payment or whatever, and we took it to $50,000, but then we changed it to where those recipients had to have an address in Peachtree City, or Fayette County, if I remember the way it was written.
Okay.
So, that makes a difference. It helps stop a little bit of the bleed, and I think that's what term you used in getting these people out of here. But, you know, the bottom line here in BRE is, you want to keep that business here. And you can't do everything for them. But there's got to be, there is a happy medium. And what I guess my question is, is that where you're going to lead in the negotiations?
Am I going to lead?
Are you going to be the leader? Or will it be Bob? Or will it be one of us? Or whom?
Well, so, the Fayette County Development Authority serves as a single point of contact for existing industry expansions and new industry coming in. And then, we bring in partners as we need them, whether it's, you know, you have a specific expertise that we would pull you in to have a conversation about a subject matter, or working with Bob or the mayor, just depending on what the project needs. Yeah.
Now, the bottom line is, you want to keep them here. And you have to look at it, you know, let's say if it's a 10-year abatement, you have to look and see where you're going to be in 10 years, not where you are right now.
That's right. That's right. Yes, sir.
Well, Nikki, it's a pleasure to have you here. As you know, I've got a good background, and hopefully I can help out along the way. But really, what I think you're looking for is some guidelines on what you can do on the behalf of this city to help foster more and better and quality jobs, buildings, businesses, et cetera. But at the same time, you're going to look for that balance of, how do we attract them in here with what type of incentives? And I liked the first one that the mayor brought up, which is the expedited permit. I know it's only a small amount of money as buildings go. If you're spending a half a billion dollars on a big building, this is a small amount. But time is money. If they've got the next best sliced bread machine that's going to hit out there, they want to get it up and running and out the door. So, if we can expedite it, that's worth more than the value of the expediting numbers to have them start up sooner. So, we'll go through each of these in a bit, but just to follow up with the mayor here, that certainly got my approval on that one.
Mr. DiStadio?
No, I agree. I think the most important thing is getting permits. But I would like that when we go through, I think we've got to recognize that we've got citizens that are concerned about what we're doing. And one of the things that bothers me significantly every time we build is cutting down trees. And I was very instrumental when I was on the planning commission to make sure we had a Tree Save program. So, I'm not interested in giving up to anybody, including yourself. You're a lovely lady. I'm sure you're not going to do this, is just coming in and cutting down every tree. So, we do have to remove trees to build. God, I've been building all my life, and I want to make sure that we have, we live with the Tree Save program that we have. They either have to replace a certain amount of trees, or they have to pay for some trees. And, you know, that has an impact on what they're going to do. I understand that. But I would like to see us work around as much as we can the Tree Save program that we have.
Well, and to that point, I would say, I agree. I live on a tree farm, so I, you know, I tell people, my husband is a tree hugger in that when we were doing a selective cut a couple of years ago, he went out and literally hugged every tree that is still standing. So, he is, and very familiar with saving trees. I will say that when you compare us to some of our neighbors that don't have that, and it comes in as a bottom-line number when deciding between locating in Peachtree City, Fayette County, and another community, that they look at it from a bottom line, well, they'll let me cut down all the trees, and they don't have a tree fund to go with it, so this is a strike to the bottom line. I think that that can be balanced through a partnership with Southern Conservation Trust, or someone on the replanning side. They may not be able to do the replanning on their property, but that it, the reforestation is done. So, I think there's some options of how can we look for that as part of it. But it really is, it hits their bottom line, and they say, why do I have to pay X number of dollars to do this in Peachtree City, and I don't have to pay it in another community?
I understand. I just hope you work with us, because we don't want to see trees cut down as much as we can.
Mr. DiStadio, it's not a matter of her working with us. We get to decide.
You get to tell me what you're willing to do.
We can decide tonight. Don't do anything to the tree, you know, don't do anything. Don't offer any impact fee reductions. Don't do this, don't do this, don't do this. And then, the company goes to Coeita County.
I understand.
And that's okay.
And I'm willing to work with you.
I can only do what you entrust to us to offer on your behalf.
And we're here to make those definitions tonight.
Yes, thank you.
And she wants it to be what council wants. Bob wants it to be what council wants, and we owe it to them to be clear, so they can go out with these marching orders that we put together. So, then the next question is, as we go down the list that was in the packet, what can you live with? Probably all five of us would have a different idea of what would be a reasonable start to the conversation, a reasonable set of guidelines to give the Fayette County Development Authority. Where do you want to start?
Well, I mean, like I said before, I'm going to need more information before I start throwing arrows at a number.
Okay. What do you need?
I want to know what other people do, and, you know, what does it take? And, you know, I mean, what, depend on your experience and be able to do some comparables, a comparable analysis.
So, I'll tell you a couple of examples. I had a call with a company that has international headquarters, and that our standard incentive that we have offered has been a tax abatement if they met the criteria that was outlined in the intergovernmental agreement. And this company, by all accounts, met it with their investment numbers, with their job numbers, with their wages. And they said, but our headquarters in the other country doesn't understand how this works, and so they're not even willing to talk about that. And I said, well, thank you. I wish I had something else to offer to help you, but I don't have anything. The state had port taxes that they could use. They had other things that the state was able to offer them in this conversation. But I didn't have anything to say, we want you to grow in Fayette County, that I was able to offer them. I had to say, thank you so much, and call me if you, you know, if I can connect you to resources. But we don't, we can't try and keep you here, because I didn't have anything. And so, that was part of the conversation. Another piece was, you did have a jobs and investment grant. The last one was closed out. It was Renai, I believe. And they have to, it's after the jobs are created and the wage, I mean, they have to report out what that looks like. And so, you set it and say, this is what it is before it's given. You have a say in it, and then, at the end, once they've performed, then they are able to receive the grant. So, it's not on the anticipation of what they say they're going to create, it's on what's actually been created. But they're able to take those calculations into their bottom line to say, this is how it can, this is what it'll reduce it, so...
That's a good example, because when we worked with Renai, they wanted to put that extra parking lot in. They had to cut down all those trees. And they worked with us, and they found places where they could plant the trees on their property. And I think they found out they had to pay for a few trees. We gave them some credit on that. I mean, so they worked with us, and we worked with them.
Well, and I'll tell you that this is not in your packet, and so, don't shit the messenger. But I've had meetings with companies that are looking to expand, and current, the number of employees that they have in their facility, they don't need as many parking spaces as are required by ordinance, or...
By ordinance?
Yep. Okay. By ordinance. That you have to have so many square feet, you have to have so many parking spaces. And so, they're having to remove trees to create parking spaces for employees that they don't have and don't need. And so, I think that that's one of the things that you could evaluate, is based on the use of it, what, is there a sliding scale on it? What does that look like? That they don't need 200 parking lots. They're saying, we're only going to hire 50 people. So, looking at, there's some things like that that I think we could bring to the table as well.
And when you brought in the Trillith, I know I was talking with Steve Rapsen back when that was starting. And they got something like five or 10 years' worth of no taxes.
They actually, that was a story that went around. They got a zero year on their first year. They got a 5% increase each year, and they had a 20-year abatement. It's the only 20-year abatement that's ever been done in Fayette County, to my knowledge, and all of the records that I've looked at.
I think Cooper was 20. Was it Cooper?
Was it? Okay. So, but I will tell you that the property that Trillith, the studios is located on, is what received the abatement. They're at the 50% mark on that now. They've been there 10 years, so they're 50% into it. In the nine years prior, and I calculated the 10th, but it's not in my head, so I'm going to go with the nine years. In the nine years prior to Trillith locating on that property, that the total property paid less than $100, right at $100,000. It was 90 and some change in property taxes. In the 10 years since Trillith has been located there on the studio property, they've paid $4.2 million in property taxes. That's a pretty good return on investment.
A 20-year abatement.
Those are some good statistics to know.
Yes. They did have a 20-year abatement.
Well, not only that, it's all the jobs and all the residual jobs.
That's right. And to that point, we, I was on a meeting this morning. We're going to be launching an economic impact study of film specific to Fayette County. The state has done one, Savannah has done one, but we have engaged a firm to come and do a study of what is the direct and indirect spend of film in Fayette County, so that we can tell that story. Because it's more than just that the abatements were the incentive that got the studios there, but what has happened since then. And so, you know, I attribute a lot of the real estate market in the area to people that are moving in. We've seen a rise, and I think that that's a benefit. We've seen the All-Access Hotel on Crosstown that was purchased and is being renovated. Is that all?
All movies.
All movies. Sorry. So, it was purchased and being renovated, and it's supporting the workforce of film. And so, that's, you know, we're working on existing industry expansion, existing industry, film, and workforce development are our key focuses, so...
Could you speak to a minute? Back to the packet and the incentives we had sketched out as a starting point for conversation. Could you speak to the fact that this isn't for any industry coming to Peachtree City or Fayette County? This would have to have a threshold of investment of, say, $100 million minimum before this could be considered?
That is up to you as council as to what that is, what threshold you set. I would say that it's not something that just, that every company, that it's a special, this is, we really, they're making the investment, and we want to partner with them on it. We talked about that number, and I think that's a good number to look at, you know? We have currently two that would meet that threshold in Peachtree City expansions.
So, is there something, is there a way we consider, could consider a sliding scale? So, maybe those businesses that employ 25 people, 50 people, of course, maybe they don't get quite as much, but yet there's an incentive for them to expand also? And what does that look like? And how do we, you know, how do we get there?
Yes. I'm happy to help work on that and bring back some more answers on what the possibilities could look like. I think that's a really good idea, if you wanted to say. I'll tell you that for the Development Authority, our minimums are $10 million of investment, of capital investment, 20 jobs that pay $50,000 apiece. And so, and you have to be in one of our five targeted industry sectors. And if you ask me what those are, I'll probably forget one, but I can try and tell you. Corporate headquarters, film and new media, technology, aviation and aerospace, and advanced manufacturing. And so, if you're not in those five, then you're, that's not what is a good fit for our community. And it has helped us keep some businesses that were really interested in coming to Fayette County because of our location, but weren't a good fit and didn't meet that criteria.
I have a couple of questions, and maybe question some comments and things for you, Nikki. The way I see it is, we want to eventually, this group here wants to eventually come up with some kind of plan that we can work with you and let you run with the ball, basically, when you get some offers coming, because you'll know which way you can go on each of these. And I've written down that it's, these are the ones that we need to work on to make sure I've got it right. I've got tax abatement, permits, impact fees, jobs, trees, and then maybe some associated grants, loans, and things that are special. Does that kind of cover the list of things that, that's a pretty big laundry list for you?
Can you go back over those again?
Actually, it's in our packet. Go ahead, again.
Okay. Well, I've written them down here, just to make it easy for me. I put tax abatement, permits, impact fees, jobs, trees, and the last one, it's kind of a miscellaneous, some loans and grants, and matching this and matching that. So, you've got all of these buckets that you can incentivize the people to come to Fayette County, and in particular Peachtree City. But you've got something that you can actually talk about. So, you've got to, you know, pull from this bucket and pull from this bucket. Well, maybe they don't need any of that, so you've got to make a decision. That's going to come from this council. Is that right, the way I understand it?
Yes. And that is in our packet.
Okay.
So, in our packet as number one, permitting process. Number two, tree fund and impact fees, tree fund fee and impact fees. Number three, Peachtree City Jobs and Investment Grant Program. We also have the incentive, the tax abatement, which the Fayette County Development Authority already has the agreements that they need from Peachtree City on that. And then, last but not least, we have some new grant and loan opportunities related to the Fayette County Development Authority.
But I want to finish in just one thought for you. I'm the newest one on here, and so I don't have that kind of experience that these people have. To me, it's a, and having dealt with business, I like to always have a trial balloon go out, or test drive, so to speak. I'm not sure if we can do that, Mayor. Can we? Test drive this kind of a thing, and maybe give her some guidelines, but we can adjust them as we go along?
Everything would, as I see it, you know, to start out, you know, from a business owner's or the corporate side, as well as the municipal side, everything's pretty much on the table. And it's going to be a given tape for probably a period of, you know, four to six weeks to come to whatever agreement we come to, and then we go.
And then, we just give Nikki the ball, and she can run with it?
It's going to be a negotiation. That's...
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we want to come up with is, I almost want to say like a minimum, so you have something to work with, and if it's close...
How about a maximum?
And you go up to.
Okay. I guess, I mean, a maximum from us, or something that she knows, that she has, that she can take and go, okay, I know I have this, and it's close, and you can go, okay, maybe we go back to council, maybe we can change X or Y and whatever, right? I mean, so, whatever we come up with should be conservative.
And I think it can be adjusted. So, if we decide on X, and she goes out and she finds somebody, and they want something else, you can come back in and we can make an adjustment and make it X plus, if that's what we want.
At least she can have the conversation, knowing this is one of the topics that you can talk about.
These are some of the things. You don't get all of them. You get one, maybe. I mean, depending on the project.
And that's what we want to give you, some tools to work with.
That's right. That's exactly, I'm asking you to give us a toolbox that we can work with on your behalf.
I got to say, I don't know that that takes four to six weeks. I think we have a sample, a framework in our packet. I'd like your opinion on that.
I think if you just come up with a basic, you know, percentage of, you know, number one, I think a 10-year tax abatement is pretty much standard.
Agreed.
But on the other hand, if you have something on the magnitude of Trillith coming to Peachtree City, you might consider 20 years. Right now, 10 will work.
Agreed.
I agree.
But that's her. That's not us.
Yeah. That won't be Peachtree.
It's county-wide, though, isn't it?
Yeah, but we wouldn't have any say.
I think it's probably industry-wide.
Help us out, Nikki. What's the explanation there?
Are we, on the tax abatement, is that a county ordinance or something?
It was in 2016 or '17, all of the municipalities and... It was in two thousand sixteen or seventeen, all of the municipalities and the county agreed to it, as long as we stayed within these parameters.
Right, okay.
That, that they were in agreement on it. And, and there have been times that we, that it varied a little bit, and we have a conversation about it to say, this is why this varies a little bit.
Yeah, but that's a good starting point.
That's right. That's right.
Could you explain what that starting point is again?
This is a quiz, and it's late in the day.
I'm sorry.
It is ten million in investment. It is twenty jobs that pay fifty thousand dollars a year, average jobs, and those, and in one of our targeted sectors, targeted industry sectors.
So it's three requirements is all you have? Ten million dollars, twenty-five jobs, and twenty jobs, sorry?
Twenty, twenty, twenty jobs and fifty thousand.
And it's got to be in the five segments.
And, and the fifty thousand, the wages requirement.
Okay.
So, I, I mean, I think we can make some progress tonight.
Okay.
Yep.
You know, and I'd like to see us make some progress, but one of the things I talked about was that sliding scale. I certainly would like to see that come back, and we talked more about that, and I don't think we're ready to talk about it tonight, but the low hanging fruit is the permits.
Yeah.
Done.
Oh, done.
Yeah. I, I don't think, I don't think we have.
Okay, good. Can I, can I interject something?
Please.
Can I offer a suggestion, and I don't know where it is in your packet. I left mine over there, so. But on the, you had the jobs grant, jobs and investment grant program that was funded previously. I don't think it's been funded in a couple of years. Am I right, Mr. King?
Right.
In a couple of years?
It has not been.
Okay, yeah. I didn't think it had been, I, I didn't think it had been funded in a while. But I think there's an opportunity to bring that back. It is a job creation, so the investment and the create, the jobs are, are realized in the community. But then there's also an opportunity that as part of the Development Authority's commitment to reinvest the funds from QT, from our, the proceeds of brokering the deal with QTS is that we're reinvesting those funds back into the community. And so we have put forth a grant and loan program that I believe you could make a pretty good argument that if you applied to the grant program to, as a matching funds to start your jobs and invest, jobs and investment. We need a new name for that, because it's complicated. Jobs and Investment Grant.
Investment Grant Program.
Grant program, that you could, you could apply to that, and it's open now, and then use those as a fifty-fifty match. And those areas are job creation, infrastructure, workforce development, and tourism product development. And so if it falls in those, it's in line with what your community's strategic plan is, where you want to go. It's a pretty simple application process, but you could maximize those dollars by matching with the Development Authority to create a, so I think that's an easy one to get to. If that's something, you've done it, you know it works, you've seen that, and then re-instituting that or reactivating that.
These are the options A, B, and C that you got on page three?
Yep.
I mean, that, that's one I want to, I want to think about more. I just, I mean, I'm, I'm all for something.
Yeah.
Right, but I'd like to.
Wait, to, to answer, to answer your question, Mr. Dostadio, what she's referring to is the three programs now that the Fayette County Development Authority has created. It's one, two, and three in the packet. I didn't want to get confused with the A, B, and C.
Okay.
Related to the jobs and investment.
The ones above that, A, one, two, and three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Couple of different things going here, but she's explained to us what, how we can leverage, leverage grant dollars now available at the Fayette County Development Authority to make these incentives a possibility.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to bring the city manager in this conversation, if you allow me to.
Of course.
Bob, what's the, you know, we're, we're looking at a lot of dollars going out here, grants and everything else, and loan programs, maybe up to six hundred thousand dollars, if I read this right, three hundred from us and three hundred from them. How's that going to be, do you look at how it's going to be funded? Can you comment some things on that, just to keep us informed?
Sure. So, are you speaking in regards to the matching grant fund?
Well, the matching or any of the other, I mean, obviously, that's going to be a tax reduction we're going to have.
Right.
Potentially, so.
So there, as Nikki had mentioned, there, there was some samplings of these incentives in the past that were done, but on a much smaller scale. So we did have a job grant program, and we, it took advantage of that for some of the companies in the city. There was at one time, going back and looking at the, the history, there was some mitigation of impact fees. I'm not sure if there was any mitigation to the Tree Bank or the Tree Fund at that point. So, right now, there is not funding or any major funding put aside for economic development in the city. That just, that kind of went away at some point, and I'm not sure why, but, you know, definitely something in my future to be looking at. Although, what I would recommend, though, because it sounds to me like council is amenable to looking at all of those five different incentives that were just discussed.
Yep.
I would say maybe a good compromise would be to say to the city manager, me, I'll speak like I'm not in the room, but I'll say, give me the authority to work with the Development Authority to come back with some, you know, parameters that you can chew on, should a company come forward and say, these are the incentives that we'd like to take advantage of. And then Nikki and I could work together and say, okay, well, this industry in this targeted area is looking for expedited permit fees, and they're looking for job creation grant money. And as long as council is, council is amenable to that, we can come back and say, these are the two things that they're looking for. How amenable are you and how far are you willing to go as far as giving those mitigation things?
I like it.
So like talking about a sliding scale and coming up with parameters and things along those lines, those are hard to put numbers to, because everybody does it differently. I've had experience in economic development where we've done it by percentages, how much investment the company's doing, what are they bringing, how bad do we want them in the city, are they an existing company in the city, do we want to keep them here? So there's a lot of things that you go into factoring that in. But since we're starting off, I think a good way to get into it would be to say to me, okay, Bob, work with the Development Authority. Come back when a company has this. We're amenable to all of these different incentives. We know we're amenable to the expedited permit fee cost. Tell us what they're looking for, bring it back, let us make a decision, and we'll kind of go forward with that. I think that, that's a good way to get involved with this.
Sounds like a plan.
Yep. Madam Mayor, are you going to need a motion of some type on this?
No.
Just to make sure we're all in agreement with all of this?
Yeah, I think if you just, if you, you know, collectively just say, yes, this is a good idea, what Bob just said, then, you know, I will make sure.
Yes.
I like that, what Bob said. Do what Bob said.
When you bring it back to us, would you tell us where it's, the money's coming?
Yeah, so, so what, what I really need to do is, as far as putting a policy together going forward, you know, we can look at this on a case-by-case basis when this is happening. I just need to know that you're all amenable, you know, collectively to doing some of these incentives, and I can work with the Development Authority at that point. And we can come back should we're approached by a company and these are the three or four things or two things they're looking for. Maybe they don't all make sense, maybe one or two of them, maybe none of them make sense, but we can bring that back to council and say, they want to do this and this and this, are you okay with it? And we will bring that back to a public meeting.
I, I would like to add one small thing to this, and hopefully you all agree. And that is, we have the ability to do training here at local colleges, and that would be a nice incentive to have that as an additional, number seven on my list, to give maybe a grant for education of some of the workers here at our local universities and colleges. What do you think on that?
Can you speak to that?
I can.
I worked for the Quick Start Program for ten years.
Okay.
So, we have a very strong partnership with Southern Crescent Technical College, and they, every time I meet with them, they have a new program that they can offer for training for any number of things, and they usually have funding from somewhere else that will fund that. So I would say, don't spend your dollars there. Let them, let them fund it and let us get the benefit of it. But we work very closely, and I think that having them at the Centers of Innovation is a, is a good resource for our community.
I think that's a great point.
I know exactly that, and thank you for that explanation.
And more to come on workforce development stuff.
Okay.
Wonderful. Any other last comments?
Just again, I want to make sure you heard me, Bob. When you come back with your plan, tell us where's the money coming from that we're going to put in. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll, we'll define the parameters, and I'll make sure council is fully aware of all of that.
Fully on board, Mayor.
Thank you, Nikki, for taking the time to talk to us tonight. That was wonderful.
Even if they cut your trees down?
So, I, I have a question. It's probably a roving question. So, you know, we have our Tree Bank, and maybe I should know this already, but if there's ten acres and it's ten acres full of trees, are we going to make them like, I heard once, it's like four hundred and something thousand? Are you going to call somebody? It's like, what?
It's all based on how much impervious surface they build. So if they save half of the property and don't build on it, then they have less of a tree obligation, let's call it that. But if they flatten a piece of property and cover it seventy-five percent of it with impervious surface, then they have a high responsibility to replace trees, and they don't have a lot of space to put it on, because they've used, they've maximized their property.
But it's caliber inches, number one, and they don't have to put it on their property. They can put it throughout the city.
Well, and that's what the Tree Fund Ordinance states, is that a minimum of fifty percent has to be planted on that property. But then the other fifty percent, they can do a cash, no, cash contribution to a, I don't know what the term Paul would call it, but an earmarked account that can only be used.
Dedicated.
For dedicated, restricted, my, my boss over here. Restricted account that can only be used for trees.
So when somebody's looking at, I guess, is this, I mean, I don't, no, it's not common, because you said our neighbors don't have it, but when they're looking at a piece of property, ten acres, however much it is, they have to factor in the caliber inches to get the total price of the property, and it makes the property price a lot higher, and that's why we're here tonight.
Well, and, and I'll throw another layer on that. If they have to do wetland mitigation, those credits are insanely expensive right now.
And we have a lot of wetlands.
And we have a lot of wetlands. And so they, they should mitigate it, but that's a, you know, I, I didn't know anything about wetland mitigation credits in probably April of this year. I've learned a whole lot since then, because I had a company that they thought their bill was going to be twenty-five thousand dollars for wetland mitigation credits, and they got the bill, and it was two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And they went.
Ten times.
But it was because of the supply and demand. They, that, that was the going price that they had to pay for the credits that they had to buy. So it's all of the things as they add in together, and it's really being able to hear that company, what they're saying. My development costs are this high, my, you know, going through each thing, and if there's anything that we can do to reduce that.
But we can't reduce wetlands credits.
No, we can't. Not, not today.
We have, we have so many of our open spaces. When you look at the zones where we can build, especially down seventy-four, there are mostly wetland credits.
Okay, council, we know we're amenable to something. We're going to leave this in Bob's capable hands. Great conversation. Any last comments?
Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it. Item, discussion item B, Policy eight oh six, naming of facilities, parks and other areas. I brought this back. I think, Mr. King, you took it out of consent, because you wanted to have a limit. There's a limit now of two per year. Is there any other question or concern? I think it's a great policy. We can, we can have the reason.
It's well written. The, the only thing that I would make sure that the council is unanimous in, in naming, and I think that's in there.
It is in there, yeah.
Yep, it's right in the front.
Any other last comments?
I still have the same concern I had before, Mayor, is the beneficiary naming, where you can basically pay for someone to have something named. It's on page six, Beneficiary Recognition.
Yeah.
Where someone basically, I, I agree that anybody that's passed away or anybody that's made significant contributions ought to be honored in whichever way we can, but it goes on to basically allow somebody to, not that person, but an organization, or maybe that person, can basically pay for something like that.
It does, but it's up to council to decide. It leaves it up to council.
I kind of had the same, as we did our two-by-twos today. I kind of had the same question, and then, yeah, ultimately, for whatever reason, we might not think it's a good representation of our values as a city and as a council. It has to be unanimous, so one person can go, we don't care if that person gave.
Ten million.
Ten million dollars, we're not going to name it after them.
I, I guess I agree there, as long as, you know, we have the choice to say, I, I just don't think someone should be named, paid for getting his or her name on the card or a, yeah, okay. I agree. Thank you.
Any other last comments?
Yes, I have one, only one comment. And, you know, we are a special city, and we've only got so many things that can be named, and I happen to believe that I think it should be one per year and not two. But other than that, I don't really have any other issues. I would like it to be one, because I want it to be special, that we name that. That's, that's my opinion.
Well, with that, with the unanimous vote that has to take place before it's done, you, you can do that.
I know that that, have that as an out card. I can play that, play the ace if I need to. I just don't want to be, I just don't want to be, all of a sudden, everybody wants to name it after, you know, somebody, and I say, you know what, we've already done one. I got the no card here. I just, I guess politics is that way. You got to make tough decisions, and that's got to be a tough decision.
Or you decide, or you decide that, you know what, four smart people that I'm on a team with think this is a good idea, maybe we'll move it forward.
Yep.
Two, two a year. I mean, you know, we have a lot of facilities that are unnamed.
I just wanted to make it a special, and somebody gets their name on a facility or a place or things, and I thought one per year would make it very special for that person, in my opinion.
My concern initially is the cheapening of, of that type of honorarium. I do not want that to happen.
Yep, amen. I agree.
I'd make, I'd make sure that we had the unanimous portion in there, and that's basically my, my ace in the hole. There are many people here that deserve to be recognized.
Don't, don't disagree.
A few here and there. There, there's many over the years. Granted, we're a sixty-three, four-year-old, you know, city or whatever it is, but we've got some folks that have done a lot of stuff here.
And you, you still have the after death in there, so it has to be after someone's passed away.
Yep.
No, what it is, is.
Number three, B three, nominations must be made after the ten-year period observed after the death, retirement. Okay, so you've got retirement in there.
Retirement and service of the, of the individual.
My mistake. It's not just death. Thank you.
Okay. So if this comes to a, at the city council meeting, we're ready. Everybody's ready.
I'm on board.
We've had our stay, we've had our say.
Twice.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Thanks, council. Discussion item C. Do you have everything you need for that? We're done with that? Do you have everything you need for that naming?
Nothing's changed, right?
Correct, correct. We'll, we'll add it to our upcoming consent agenda if everyone's amenable to it. Sounds good.
Now the big one.
Discussion item C, short-term rental ordinance. Robin Caillou.
I'm going to do a little bit of a replay of what we've been doing through the various workshops we've had, and just show, uh, show you the PowerPoint with the red text being new changes and the things that have been scored out being, or struck out, being things that have been removed. This, our, our last meeting was June sixth, when we talked about this project. We first presented this at, just a review of where we've come from, April seventh in two thousand twenty-two, and then June sixteen in two thousand twenty-two. It was a staff topics item, and then we've had a workshop on May, June, and now August of this year. Things that have changed since last time. We are still requiring a permit, and it would be required to be annually renewed. There would be, we originally proposed that no detached structures would be permitted, but through discussion, there was consensus that we would remove that restriction. We are still restricting the use of RVs. We also added at one point a five percent maximum in the city, and after discussion, that was reduced to one point five percent. And then we added that no sublease permitting, no subleasing would be permitted at some point in the, one of the drafts.
Madam Mayor, can I just, could you back up? I know that I've not made every meeting, but we actually took off no detached structures.
Yes.
And that was three to two or four to one?
We could talk about it.
No, I just asked you. We, I'm asking a question. We took it off?
We eliminated the prohibition on accessory dwelling units. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
We eliminated the prohibition on accessory dwelling units such as guest houses and pool houses.
I'm surprised Phil said that was okay. That was one of your.
Yeah, that's one of the ones I, I, I thought, if somebody has a guest house, if we're going to let the person rent out their basement, why not let them rent out their guest house?
Okay.
Things like.
I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Because I don't remember that, but I have trouble remembering things now.
No, your memory's fine. I think we had one workshop where you weren't in attendance.
Yeah, it was decided at that workshop.
Um, continuing.
At the last meeting, you requested some opinion from the city attorney on whether or not we could restrict that a permit only be issued to someone who had residency in Peachtree City, or that only people, human beings, could be issued a, a permit, not, it be issuing them to corporations, LLCs and the like. And the city attorney has, has told us that that is not something that he would recommend that we do. And in fact, we do require a point of contact person who is within one hour away and must be available twenty-four seven. We can require that, but that is the greatest extent that we're able to, in, under the city attorney's advice. So we have not made any changes to the ordinance with those requests.
And we had that discussion in the meeting that I missed, too?
I think we asked the question last time. This was the first time that we did get the ruling from our city attorney. Now we have that as a basis.
Things that have remained the same is we are still going to make sure that all parking associated with the short-term rental is off-street and on paved surfaces. associated with the short-term rental is off-street and on paved surfaces, that all garbage is screened from view from public roads, and that only bedrooms can be used for sleeping as defined by the international code, building code, and that there's a maximum of three persons per bedroom can sleep in there, which effectually limits the number of people who can stay in a short-term rental. We're still prohibiting special events and parties and still requiring that they post the noise ordinance and the parking requirements on-site. At the last committee or workshop, you all requested that we add the guest register requirement back into the ordinance. So that has been added back into the ordinance. And we're still requiring that they post that phone number of that local contact person on property.
I have a question on that slide, so may I ask a question on this?
Sure, go ahead.
We have no special events or parties, but we also have a limit of three people, according to the reading of the ordinance. We have a maximum of three people per bedroom. And then we also have in the ordinance that we can have a get-together of other people coming in at twice the amount of the people that are in the bedroom. So if you've got one bedroom, you can have three people, you can have a total of six. But there are houses in this city that have six or more bedrooms at three. So you're talking 18 people and then times two is 36 people that could be there at a party per se. And you know what happens when the crowd grows, there's always chances of disruption of some type. So I'm wondering, is it wise to have it at a doubling of the number of people in a bedroom, particularly since there is a lot of bedrooms in some of these houses? Maybe a limit on, a maximum limit regardless of the number of bedrooms. Just a thought for everybody.
The...
Well, I would say that this is open for discussion, so whatever you all decide that you want that number to be, you can let us know. This is the information that we took from the last several workshops that we're just bringing back in front of you as to what was agreed upon in those meetings. So if you want to change any of these numbers or any of the factors that are in here, you know, we're all ears.
Okay. Any comments on that?
Yeah, you know, I guess the question would be, how would we say you're having a party as compared to a get-together, right?
Yeah, exactly.
It's not a party.
No, we're just getting together.
Getting together.
I've got 36 people in here.
Well, we have a noise ordinance.
Chief Moon, do you have any?
You do have a noise ordinance, right, Chief Moon?
Whether it's a get-together or a party, counsel, I'm sure if it grows to 36 and noise becomes an issue, I'm certain a citizen's going to call for our response and we can evaluate accordingly to what ordinances we have to enforce.
Thank you.
So you're saying that that's something that can be just handled on a case-by-case basis with a complaint that comes in to the police department?
Just like we do every other call for service as a complaint.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you, Chief.
All right. I think what we'll do is...
Can't we, excuse me, can't we just, where it says no special events or parties, can't you put a limit on there?
Well, none are allowed at this point.
Well, where'd you read that they're going to have?
No, I'm just saying it's a get-together. I didn't say it was a party, you know?
All right.
Because they can have twice the number of three, since it's three per person, three room, three in a room and they have six bedrooms. That's 18 times two is 36 people without any, breaking any ordinance. Maybe we should have a maximum limit, because some of these houses are big and they have big park, big backyards and big swimming pools. I think a reasonable, maybe 25 people maximum, something like that. That's just a suggestion, by the way.
I'd say...
Yeah, let's just leave it and see what happens.
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, you know, if you're going to go to that extent, you would really not want to rent it out as a bedroom for a just-married couple, for God's sake. So let's let that go. We don't need to get into that.
Yeah, let's just see how it shakes out.
We have in the packet, did you have any more slides?
I just wanted, I am here, you all tell me what to do.
Please continue.
This is, remains the same. This is that local contact person who has to be 21 years or older, has to respond to a call within one hour and that they have to be available 24 hours a day. We are still proposing that we require a fire marshal inspection, a code enforcement inspection, they are still required to pay all the local and state lodging taxes and fees. The thing that we did remove was the occupational certificate requirement for each permit, short-term rental. These were some of the things that the fire marshal would look for and we've discussed in previous workshops, such as safe means of egress and no extension cords for permanent wiring. I don't, I won't read everything to you. And these are some of the things that our code enforcement would look for, making sure that the pool barriers are safe, make sure that bedroom, this is when they would determine the maximum overnight occupancy by evaluating the bedrooms. We would do a criminal background check on all applicants and they would have to be five years felony-free and two years free of municipal convictions except traffic. And part of the process would result in mailing that local contact person's information to every property within 500 feet of that short-term rental.
But these background checks are just for the owners?
They are for, yes, the owners. You're right. And we're keeping that three-strikes-you're-out enforcement policy where each citation is a $1,000 fine and on that third one, they have a two-year revocation and cannot apply for another permit anywhere within that city in that two years. So that's a summary of the changes that we have made at this point. And happy to answer any questions. You may have.
I think we've had so many workshops and conversations, I think what I'll do is summarize what we have so far, where we're at right now. We have that in our packet. That's the list that we've been ticking through in every meeting. Let me know if you disagree or have a problem with where we are on any of these issues. At the top of the list is grandfather's existing short-term rentals. The answer is no. All short-term rentals must apply within 30 days of the adoption of the ordinance. Counsel, you're good so far?
Yes.
Permit required? Yes. One for each property. Annual renewal is required. Primary residence requirement? No. What does that mean exactly?
That means that the person who owns the property does not have to reside on the property while they're renting it out.
Thank you. Good so far?
Is there a possibility on that particular one that in order to have our residents have the ability to buy a piece of property and then also rent it out, as opposed to allowing it to go to a corporation and have a bidding war on a piece of property? I know I'm not getting in, I'm not going to control any of that because it's going to be whatever the price is, but we should give at least people who are part of, that live in the city, a little bit more of a preference than a corporation for licenses and permits. Just a thought.
I think what we learned from our city attorney is that we cannot make that differentiation.
You can't give him preference for a city person as opposed to a corporation?
We can double-check that with our city attorney, but he made it pretty clear.
We've had the opinion.
Yeah, I saw what he said.
And didn't this, didn't this mean that the person that owns it doesn't have to live here?
They don't.
Correct.
I'm going to continue down the list. So primary residence requirement, no, means that you don't have to live in the property that you are renting out.
But I thought it also meant you don't have to live in the city. That's what I just said.
That's another issue altogether. That's not this line item, but that is correct. You are correct. Short-term rental period is maximum 30 days. Can use guest house or other detached structure. Mr. Prebor changed that from a no to a yes. I would, myself, like to see it changed back, but I'd like your opinion on that, Phil.
I would agree with that. I'd like to see it changed back.
I think if you have a guest house, why not, if you can rent out your basement, why can't you rent out your guest house?
I'm with Phil. If it's your property, it's your building, your call.
Mr. Holland?
I'm torn on that one because I know people do have pool houses and guest houses in the back of their house or built onto their house or whatever, but I don't like the idea of having, I don't like the idea at all. I would, I would leave that as no. No guest houses and detached structures. How about yourself, Madam Mayor?
I agree. That's where we've been for decades, is that we don't rent out our detached structures, our pool houses, our accessory dwelling units. It was, Robin explained to us in a previous workshop that it was part of the intent of keeping your residential property residential.
Well, the whole STR changes that.
Absolutely. No question about that. I hear you, but I agree with Mr. Holland.
If the person, if the person comes and rents the primary and then they turn around and rent out the back house too, now you've got two people on the same property. I don't think if I were renting a house, I'd want the use of the pool, the pool house, the backyard, the detached structure and everything else.
We have three votes. You don't need to keep going.
I do have a question on that, though. If I have a house, a guest house, can I live in the guest house and rent out my house?
According to our ordinance, no.
No?
No, sir.
I think you brought that up once before, Phil.
It's okay. It's a good question.
I did. I remember.
All right. Subleasing allowed?
So, I'm sorry, American, so we changed that from a yes back to a no?
Correct.
I got it. Yes, sir.
Subleasing is not allowed.
Amen.
Maximum in city is 1.5% of all residential per the tax assessor and in Peachtree City that is 180.
That's right.
180 max in our city. That's wildly strict, in my opinion. That's where we're at.
I have one comment on that, Madam Mayor. I like the idea of 1.5. I don't have a problem with that, but we have places here in the city that are, have a homeowners association and we have many that don't have homeowners associations. What I don't want to see happen is the integrity of a neighborhood that does not have a homeowners association have a number, quite a few, say it's got maybe 50 or 60 houses there, quite a few of those rented out as short-term rentals. So all of a sudden, we've got one part of the city that has five, six, seven, eight, but still not violating the 180 total, but there, that particular part of the city, all of a sudden, bang, gets, oh yeah, you can go over there and you can go ahead and rent, you know, get a short-term rental there and buy that property. I'd like to extend the 1.5 to neighborhoods in addition to the whole city as a whole. And that's kind of what...
I don't understand.
I understand. I just don't know how you would do it.
I, I'm not saying I got all the answers here, everybody. I'm just bringing up what I think is fair and equitable for those people who are, no homeowners association versus those who have a homeowners association, got some protection. The ones who don't are only relying on the 1.5 and if that's 1.5 for the whole city and their neighborhood's got 50, they could have all 50 of those be part of that 180.
We've got 80 left in the whole city.
Well, you follow what I'm saying. It changes the integrity of that community. It changed the footprint of that community. It changes the dynamics of that community. Quite frankly, I don't know if the residents are going to go for that.
I don't understand how that would be enforceable. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, so, I mean, I hear what you're saying. The challenge with a lot of these things from an enforcement perspective is after the fact. So it's really difficult from that perspective, especially from this issue. We, you know, we don't have enough staff in our department to actually dedicate to watch this 24/7 to determine whether or not a neighborhood is creeping up on six, seven, eight, nine, 10 development in that area. You know, with such a tight restriction, it is possible that you might have a neighborhood that has a couple of those in there, but right now, the last count I think we had was around 98. So there's not many left with that 1.5 number to make that happen. I hear what you're saying. I just have a hard time thinking from a staff perspective how we would even begin to enforce that.
I understand. It, you know, it's just one of those things. I would not want to live in a community that would not have some kind of restriction on that. At 1.5 for that neighborhood, I think everyone would be fine. You know, if it's 50 houses, you know, they get one or two houses that'd be rented out, but I don't know. It just seems to me like a, an awful situation on a neighborhood that doesn't have a homeowners association where they could have a whole plethora of those houses rented out. That doesn't seem fair.
I don't know how many homes there is in the new subdivision Laurel Road, but we approved eight Airbnbs there. And I'm sure that's more than one and a half percent. So there's eight to start with.
That was part of the, that was part of the development.
I would ask one of the, I'd ask one of the STR owners in the audience tonight, does the number 98 come close to the actual number of Airbnbs in Peachtree City? Does it?
We'll find out when they have to re-register.
Once we start it up and they register, we'll find out how many we have.
So now, now we capped it at one and a half percent and you have people now that you're throwing out of business?
They're going to be running to the permit office.
They're going to be a lineup on day one.
Who gets, who gets the priority?
That's why I was asking about the preference before for city as opposed to corporations.
Now you're looking at lawsuits galore.
So what do you think, what do you think, Mr. King? What do you think is...
What I'm suggesting is the one and a half, I don't know exactly how many we have. We've got a guestimate of 98. That's what it is. We don't know. I would, I would put that percentage back to 5% because if you don't and you start denying people, you're, we're in for a world of lawsuits and I'm, you know, just from my general knowledge of law, you're going to lose every one of them.
I think we ought to...
Yeah, I don't want to change it. I mean, what he's talking about...
I could see changing it. He's right. I think that's...
Why don't we wait till that happens? I'm not, I'm not opposed to keeping the number low. Of course, from the beginning, I haven't been in favor of them, but okay. What's wrong with 180 max? And that's totally different from what he's saying.
Yeah, if it's only going to be 180, you're good to go, but you don't know that.
If it's 180 and we turn out with a couple of neighborhoods that have, you know, 10 or 15 in there, we've got a problem.
It's not per neighborhood, though, but it's not per neighborhood. The point would be citywide.
I know. I understand.
You're saying that, Clem, because you don't know.
And I know I don't know, but I would like to have it so that neighborhoods can also be set at 1.5%.
Right, but we can't. I mean, we can't.
What I'm hearing is you can't do it.
I live in a neighborhood that is no HOA. There's no end. Nobody looks at a map and says, unless you want to be arbitrary, nobody looks at a map and says, okay, Hilltop ends your neighborhood. Unless we create areas, you know, it's just, there's no such thing as the end of my neighborhood. There's no subdivision.
This is just from my curiosity. How many of our neighborhoods, how many neighborhoods, how many have HOAs and do we have any idea how many of those HOAs are banning STRs or not?
I'm so sorry. I don't have that information off the top of my head. Subdivisions, I would say...
140?
I mean...
Did you say 40?
140?
Yeah, I was thinking one, I was thinking 180. So in, in that, and then...
Probably have about 250 neighborhoods.
Well, that includes commercial. See, that's where our database gets a little...
It doesn't matter. I just was kind of curious. I'd be kind of curious to know how many of the, and this kind of goes to your point, if there's an HOA, what...
Most HOAs will not even permit them. They can do that.
Well, that's kind of Clem's point is that if, how many did, Chief?
She was saying 190. They have 190 community offices, areas, areas.
Okay.
And then so, let's just use, you know, I don't know, 100 of them have HOAs or 50 and who knows?
Probably not that many. Yeah, I would say less than 50%.
And then who knows if the HOAs are banning them, but like you said, HOAs are banning them.
They'd have the right to do that if they wanted to.
But, kind of trying to figure all that out.
Well, it's interesting that they can have the right as an HOA to ban that, but we as a city don't have the right to ban them. Is that, did I understand that law correctly from...
No, we, as a council, decided that we would not ban them as a city. We decided that we would create a responsible ordinance program, STR program. That's why we're having this conversation. But, but back to the numbers. I'm with Mr. King. I think that 1.5% was very random. We had a conversation about that. We pulled it out of thin air, not knowing how many numbers. Now, there's a lot in this ordinance that I'm not going to like. I'm willing to continue with this, but boy, we better keep an eye on this because...
I would continue with it and, you know, depending on the actual number that registers, you know, maybe we use that number and add whatever to it.
Yes.
Don't just arbitrarily say one and a half percent. That's kind of what...
Well, I mean, it...
And we may come well within it. That's fine, but...
Yeah, I think we ought to let it go and see what happens. We could always adjust it.
All right, so...
Leaving it at one and a half.
Correct. Parties, special events permitted? No. Keep a guest register? Yes? Everybody with me so far?
Yeah, that's a correction because of nine, nine seventeen dash two, because the book we had said no, but the document said yes.
Corrected now.
Okay, it's corrected. Require a landline? No, good heavens. Requires a business license? No. Collect a lodging tax? Yes.
I'm still in, in favor of that, and I know we've had the discussion, just one more time. If you can have another business in your house, why is it you need a license for that, but not for this?
I think we already beat that dead horse.
I know the horse, but, you know, one more shot to the head of the horse. Let's, any other comments? Nope. Everybody shaking their no? Okay, I'm on the record for saying I would prefer that. Okay?
Collect lodging tax? Yes. Required to meet current fire codes and building codes. There will be annual inspections required.
Yes.
Everybody with me so far? So far, we've come to consensus. Off-street parking is required. Garbage storage requirements must be screened. Notification to neighbors? Yes, within a five hundred feet radius. I object to this so strongly. I think this is government overreach at its very worst. I'd like your opinion.
I agree with you.
Not at all. I, where there's an Airbnb, and if you live next door, you live within five hundred feet, you should be able to know that it's not the one, you don't know who's gonna be in that house. And if I have small kids, and there's a house two doors down or three doors down, I wanna know that I don't know who's gonna be there.
Thank you, Mr.?
At any time, you're gonna know it's an Airbnb. Period.
Well, when I get the notice.
No.
I would say five hundred's fine, but it's five hundred, and I think, Bob, could you, could you comment? Is it five hundred from the house, or five hundred from the property lines? Each of the property lines is five hundred feet?
So, there'd be a point, there'd be a point on the house, and then in GIS, we, we would make, we would, yeah, we would make a five hundred foot circle around that property.
Is it, I thought I read in the ordinance that it's from the property line. Is that correct?
That's the tool that the county has, and it's based on that property lines.
So, on one side of the property, you could go five hundred feet one way, the next side, you've already added another two hundred and fifty feet of the, say it's two hundred and fifty feet wide house, so now you've got five hundred from the other side. Is that how it's calculated?
It's from the property line.
Well, property line in all directions.
Right, right.
From the property line, from all directions. Okay, that's just what I wanted to hear.
Put radius is what she's talking about.
From the property line.
Very wide green belt.
Different than where the house is centered on the property.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's getting the tiles split in here.
Okay, continue.
requires a local contact agent, yes, who is at least twenty-one years old. Agent must be on-site within one hour. The short-term rental permit must be posted on-site. Fines for violation, we've already discussed. First is one thousand, second is one thousand, third is one thousand plus a revocation of your permit for twenty-four months. The application fee is four hundred dollars. Seventy-five dollar late application fee, I don't understand that. You mean on a year-to-year?
Right, so if they apply thirty days late, then we charge them seventy-five dollars, 'cause we hope, just like the cart, we hope to do this just on a once-a-year basis, once we get the program rolling.
So, they would have until January thirtieth to thirty-first, since it's a January one, I believe, set up. So, the end of January, and then after that, it's another seventy-five bucks.
Yes, sir.
Got it.
I don't understand that statement. What are we saying? Whenever this gets enacted?
Right, so, they have, essentially, they have a thirty-day grace period. So, come February one, they've lost that grace period, now they have to pay four hundred dollars plus a seventy-five dollar late fee.
So, and I guess this is a question for our fire chief. Will we do all the inspections, like, you know, sign up, boom, a hundred of them to get done, and code enforcement?
This is what we do for occupational tax certificates. Yes, sir.
Yeah, but you're not having to go on-site.
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Yes. Robin is correct. We would do the, just like we do a new business now, we would go to the business, do the inspection. Whenever they come into business, we inspect it.
Oh, when they come into business?
Yeah, so, so...
Okay, so, wouldn't it be like January, you've got a hundred and...
Yes, the first, the first January...
Would be like that.
Yeah, would be like that, and then after that, it would be as needed.
So, this is on an annual basis, on the calendar year?
It is.
You might fall behind on the inspections.
We'll do the best we can. Yes, sir.
All right.
All right, that brings us to...
I'm sorry, Mayor, before we continue, do, for audio, if we can just have everyone in the audience to please keep it down, we just wanna make sure that the council members, as they're speaking, it's picked up on our, and for individuals that are watching at home as well. So, if everyone can please keep it down as the councils are discussing the, the topics. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of the list.
I, I have a question on the last two items, and I know that the city attorney did that. Did he, did he quote what part of the law that was, that he took that from, or did we just have to depend on just his opinion, which is fine, but I'd just like your, your opinion on that, city manager?
Well, my, my opinion would be that the attorney has opined on this and has given you the answer. I would say that that would be like me sitting here telling you my answer on this from a city manager's perspective.
Okay.
You know, you, you certainly have the right to reach out to the city attorney and ask that question, but this is his final remarks on that.
Yep, I got it. Thank you.
I, you know, I would have to imagine that it's, I agree with Ted, now, I mean, that's probably correct if I was to guess, but if we all felt like we needed a second opinion, we could go for a second opinion. I don't think we do. I'm okay with Ted's opinion on it.
So am I.
So am I.
So am I. I just wanted to ask the question.
I'm happy with it, but I'm an attorney, and I didn't sleep in the Holiday Inn last night.
That brings us to the end of our discussion. Do you have everything that you need?
So, I do. So, if we've reached a conclusion on this, ultimately, what we'd like to do is bring this back, you know, to future council meeting. I think we're gonna do, this would be a two-reading scenario, so we'll bring it back for our first reading.
Well, and I am so sorry, sir. The attorney believes that because this is a land use regulation, that we actually need to go through the zoning procedures law, so we need to actually have the, go through the planning commission before we come back for a first reading to you all.
Yeah. So, then that would be the steps. We'd go to planning commission, we'd come out of that, we'd come back to council for a first reading. If there's any changes that comes up from that point, then we'd have a second reading, and then, you know, we can enact the ordinance.
I'll tell you, there's a lot I don't like about this ordinance, but I think it's important that we really work diligently on this over the many months, came to consensus. The short-term rentals in Peachtree City are currently unregulated, so let's get something on the books for reasonable regulation and accountability. I want us to be able to revisit the one or two things we've already highlighted that we may need to look at later.
No, no, I mean, we, we talked about, we hammered through this, and now you wanna revisit it?
No, in the future, if we decide, like Mike said, if the numbers aren't working, this one point five percent, that's something we said we can take another look at.
I would also like to get a lot of the input from, a lot of input from the current STR owners.
I agree.
So that, you know, let's see how this thing works, and then maybe we can get them involved in a little bit, and, and maybe tweak it, whatever we need to do to make it as best we can for the residents of the city, period.
I think that's good, but I think we get a lot of that. If you don't get the emails we get.
Well, wait a minute. Ninety-nine percent of the emails you get are from people who don't have STRs.
No, I get emails from people that have STRs.
I do, too.
Well, you get them all, Frank. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I see the same ones you do.
I am.
But I would like, I would like input, especially if we go like the mayor says, to kinda update it or tweak it, whatever. I'd like their input to do that.
I think you're right. Let's get an input for them, if we have to tweak it. Good.
I have a question for Bob. During the meetings this week, we talked about a database that you're going to probably purchase to manage all of this. It's gonna be third-party, if I remember.
Yeah, so, the, the database that we would use would be the same database that we're using for the permit applications.
Okay.
The seven thousand dollar charges for a company that would let us know the short-term rentals that have been registered in the city. So, and if they booked with VRBO, they would look at those and, and let us know the, the amount. Right now, we don't have that capability. That's why we have a guess of ninety-eight total, but since it's a permitted use in the city, there could be considerably more. That's what we're aware of. So, that software tool would give us the ability to have some awareness of the, of those in the organization. Robin can speak to that if there's additional information.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I think it's a good idea. Just, I didn't see it in the, the document. I wonder if that could be a line item or two of how you're gonna manage those permits, permits to be managed by a database, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah, so, we, we have software already.
Just to kinda make sure that that's encompassed, so that we know that there's some management of this program in the ordinance itself.
Yeah, it's definitely in there. So, we have a, we have an app, well, we have a program already. We would just add this to that program.
Just a line item under maybe section...
Councilman, if, if I could add, the typical reason that that's not added in there, because if it does not work, we don't have to go back and rewrite the ordinance just to remove that. However, that's usually a policy, like a standard operating procedure within the department on how that's operated.
So, it's not an ordinance, then it's just a...
To have, the, the way that it's actually operated, no, that wouldn't be an actual ordinance.
Like implementation.
Correct, the actual implementation, and that's because if this company doesn't work out, and there's an agreement that's needed with an additional company, you don't necessarily, and their process is a little different, you don't have to rewrite the entire ordinance. And as...
You could just call it just a general database. It doesn't have to be database from company A, B, C. Could be just a database, so that you got some way to monitor and manage, 'cause if you can't manage it, if you can't monitor it, you can't manage it.
Well, that's, that'll be up to staff. Are you asking?
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's an operational role, and we would, we would make sure that we have that capability.
So, it's not necessary to put it in the ordinance?
It's not. No, what you're doing is you're defining the, the thirty-thousand-foot view of the things that you wanna actually include in the short-term rental as far as the enforcement capabilities, and then staff handles the operational side of that. So, we, we will manage that.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
And I did wanna add, as, as Robin mentioned earlier, this is gonna more than likely be in the zoning ordinance, which require a public hearing. Our ordinance is not required for two readings. That was something that was recommended by council previous to have two readings for actual ordinances, but you all have reviewed this multiple times. Since it's going in front of the planning commission, and this has been to you all on, on several occasions, we would probably just have a public hearing, and then the, the official second reading, which, this is probably the third or fourth reading of this item. So, just wanted to let you all know, it's probably gonna go in front of the, the planning commission, a public hearing in front of council, and then if you also choose to adopt it at that, that time, or make any additional recommendations.
You okay with that, Frank?
I'm okay with that. I was gonna ask, do you have a gut feeling about when it would be put into effect?
Well, we're gonna try and get it on the next available planning commission meeting, so we'll work on getting that scheduling, and I'll let you all know that date.
You probably, yeah, you probably won't, because of the advertising requirements now, you probably won't see it till October at the earliest. And in that time, we will have a lot of work, staff will have a lot of work to put together these other things, a public education program, and various outreach methods.
I was just worried about the, the current grandfathering. You know, it's gonna be a mad dash to get to the, get a new permit, or get a permit.
Yeah.
So, plenty of time to do that.
Yeah, we wanna make sure that we're putting strategically together the, the process in which everybody can come in here civilly, civilly and orderly manner, and, yeah, and we'll, or we'll send them to your house, or...
Yeah. Steep hill, be careful when you leave.